Buenas noches y bienvenidos a Beaches Watch. Estamos muy orgullosos de organizar la reunión de candidatos de la junta escolar esta noche. Y estamos muy sorprendidos por el número de personas que han participado. Esto muestra realmente la participación ciudadana, aprender sobre sus candidatos y tomar decisiones informadas. Así es lo que trata de Beaches Watch. Así que gracias por estar aquí. También quiero agradecer a nuestros candidatos por estar aquí. Y creo que estamos en una noche muy iluminada. Así que sin más, soy Maria Mark, presidenta de Beaches Watch y también la moderadora. Y como dije antes, soy la moderadora. Así que lo que digo va a funcionar. Esa es la primera regla. Sólo un breve anuncio aquí. Quiero decirles que para aquellos que no pueden estar aquí en vivo, siempre vemos nuestras reuniones y estamos viendo esta también. Y estará en nuestro canal de YouTube. Pueden encontrarlo en beacheswatch.com y clickear el enlace ahí. Así pueden compartir eso con tus amigos y familiares que no pueden estar aquí en vivo. Somos una organización de miembros, así que siempre estamos buscando nuevos miembros para unirse o renovar su membresía. Va a apoyar las cosas que hacemos aquí para la comunidad, como traer estos foros a ti y mantenerte informado. Puedes unirse en ourbeacheswatch.com. Así que tenemos esos reglas de la reunión de candidatos. Sé que no nos gustan mucho los reglas, pero están aquí por una razón. Así que cada candidato tendrá dos minutos para responder cada pregunta. Los candidatos serán preguntados las mismas preguntas. Las preguntas han sido desarrolladas por Beaches Watch, recibidas online y/o preguntas escritas presentadas por el público. Si quieres presentar tus preguntas, tendremos a dos de nuestros miembros de la junta de Beaches Watch en estos短袖. Puedes levantar la mano con las tarjetas o tarjetas de index en la mesa allá atrás. Puedes dejar tus preguntas y ellos las tomarán de tu lado. Le pedimos que eviten gritar, oír o lo demás. Así que cada candidato tendrá su tiempo para responder completamente y así el público pueda escuchar las respuestas. Como dije, las preguntas del público pueden ser dadas a nuestros miembros de la junta. Y cualquier miembro del público que se convierta en unruly será expulsado de la biblioteca por nuestro policía. Así que no quiero ver eso. Solo queremos estar aquí porque queremos estar informados y elegir la mejor opción. ¿De acuerdo? Así que empecemos. Los candidatos son Elizabeth Anderson y April Carney. ¿Qué dije? ¿Están escuchando? De acuerdo, no quiero que me llames de nuevo. De acuerdo, quiero ser amable, quiero seguir adelante con esto. Y queremos que cada candidato tenga un buen tiempo para responder las preguntas y ser escuchado. ¿De acuerdo? Puedes aplaudir al final de la reunión. Y puedes aplaudir todo lo que quieras en ese momento. ¿De acuerdo? De acuerdo. Lo siento, tienes que compartir un micrófono, así que solo para que sepas. Y un micrófono que realmente necesitas decir cuando digo "besa el micrófono" para que todos puedan escucharlo, solo para que sepas. Ok, así que estamos listos para empezar la reunión. Sí, de acuerdo. Así que estas son las introducciones y empezaremos con la señora Anderson. Así que por favor, introduce a ti misma y告诉我们什么让你成为我们地区二的班主任
Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias a todos por estar aquí. Estamos muy llenas. Hay gente sentada afuera y no puedo creer el número de personas. Y estoy realmente agradecida por la oportunidad de estar con ustedes todos y compartir un poco más sobre mí. Recuerdo sentarme aquí hace cuatro años en una reunión de candidatos y quién sabía quién estaba delante de nosotros durante los últimos cuatro años. Ciertamente hemos enfrentado nuestra parte de los desafíos y las dificultades. Pero ya sabes, no ha sido fácil. Sin embargo, sabía cuál era mi razón entonces y todavía sé cuál es mi razón para estar aquí. Después de haber graduado de la Universidad de Florida, fui maestra en Elatua County y luego me mudé de vuelta a casa aquí a Jacksonville. Y empecé a enseñar en mi laboratorio de control materno-onterario y luego otra vez fui a Edwight High School en el lado occidental de Tallahassee. Cuando terminé mi máster en intervención de salud mental de la Universidad de Norte Florida, entré en intervención de salud mental de niños y trabajé para una nonprofit community health agency. Pasé tiempo con esos niños y familias en sus hogares y en sus escuelas. Y antes de decidirme de dirigirme, estaba trabajando en la educación informada de trauma y entrenando a los maestros del Sol Spock Center. Trabajé en salud mental maternal y supervisé a un personal de terapeutas basados en la comunidad. Sabía entonces que mi pasión era continuar cuidando a los niños y las familias. Entendí las dificultades que estaban enfrentando y durante mi trabajo como estudiante, como maestra, como intervencionista de salud mental, como miembro de la junta, he estado en más de la mitad de las escuelas de Duval County, en todo el distrito. Así que soy muy familiar con la variedad de desafíos que los estudiantes enfrentan. Y sé que cuando estoy en este rol, aunque soy elegida por el distrito dos, represento al entero distrito. Estoy honrada de haber recibido oportunidades de liderazgo y servir como presidenta y espero servir como ejecutiva de liderazgo de la Asociación de Junta escolar de Florida. Y esta noche hablaremos de por qué he sido visto como líder entre mis compañeros y por qué necesitamos poner nuestros dedos en el hombro.
Gracias, señora Anderson. Gracias. Señora Carney, usted está aquí. Usted está ahí.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es April Carney y estoy aquí esta noche porque tengo dos hermosos niños que después de intentar muy duro en las escuelas públicas de Duval County durante ocho años, no estaban obteniendo el resultado que querían. Y anoche, cuando ves a tu hijo comenzar a sufrir debido a los protocolos que han sido puestos en place por la junta escolar y que no quiere ir a la escuela, que odia a sus maestros y que odia a sus amigos porque está tan miserable sobre lo que está pasando en el aula, te preguntas qué está pasando. Mi esposo y yo siempre hemos sido muy activos en nuestra educación de los niños. Nos ponemos en todas las reuniones, yo me involoco en el aula y sé lo que es para los maestros enseñar en una sala agitada y con interrupciones. Y también sé cuán difícil es para un niño tratar de aprender en ese entorno. Y así anoche decidí ir a la junta escolar y emitir mi opinión. Y no sentía que me estuviera escuchando. Y así después de mucho pensamiento decidí, ¿sabes qué? Si quiero algo cambiar, tal vez solo tengo que hacerlo yo mismo. Me mudé aquí hace 22 años. Jacksonville es mi hogar. Tengo un fondo de Wall Street. Gestioné uno de los mayores cuentas de pensiones de la unidad. Siento que mi experiencia de presupuesto sería fabulosa para las escuelas públicas de Duval County. Soy una pequeña empresaria, entiendo lo que es estar fuera de la comunidad día tras día y estar involucrado con la gente. Y así estoy aquí esta noche como una nueva perspectiva para que puedas tomar una decisión el 23 de agosto. Gracias.
Gracias. Señora Carney, por favor, cuéntanos sus dos temas principales para las escuelas de distrito dos.
Creo que el primer tema que me gustaría abordar sería la responsabilidad fiscal de las escuelas públicas de Duval County. La Escuela Pública de Duval County tiene el mayor presupuesto de la ciudad de Jacksonville y estamos gastando mucho dinero en lugares incorrectos. Justo hace dos años, cuando reabrimos para COVID, tuve que crear una cuenta de GoFundMe para raised dinero en el centro de Neptun Beach para el sanitizante de manos. ¿Por qué el presupuesto de 2.1 millón de dólares? ¿Por qué los padres tienen que raised dinero para un lugar seguro para nuestros hijos y nuestros maestros? No debería raised $3,000 y pedirle a los padres para ayudar cuando estamos tratando de reabrir escuelas, cuando estamos recibiendo financiación del gobierno federal para abrirlas. Y así realmente creo que un comité de supervisión de presupuesto que sé que se ha puesto en place es imperative. Me pediría que haya un auditorio externo porque siento que hay mucho desperdicio y muchos de nuestros dólares de impuestos no van hacia los maestros y no van hacia nuestros estudiantes. Y en mi opinión, necesitamos proporcionar una educación de clase mundial para nuestros hijos y necesitamos proporcionar un entorno de trabajo de clase mundial para nuestros maestros y eso no está sucediendo ahora. Así que responsabilidades fiscales, número uno. Número dos es la disciplina en el aula. This year we've lost 512 teachers. Solo nueve de esos maestros se quejaron del salario. El resto de esas personas que nos van a dejar son debido a razones personales y estrés. Estamos viviendo en un mundo donde tenemos muchas cosas interesantes sucediendo ahora mismo y entiendo que estamos en tiempos difíciles. Pero un maestro no puede educar a nuestros hijos si hay una constante interrupción en el aula. Nuestros hijos deben saber que la vida es sobre consecuencias, buenas o malas, y necesitamos atacar esas cuestiones de cara.
Gracias. Señora Anderson.
Sí, muchas gracias. Así que mis dos temas principales para las escuelas de distrito dos. Tendría que decir que son los dos temas principales para la Escuela Pública de Duval County. Primero y más, hemos establecido un plan estratégico. Así que nuestros objetivos como junta escolar debe avanzar hacia esos objetivos estratégicos. Esos son los objetivos que fueron establecidos a través de sesiones de atención a la comunidad en todas las escuelas públicas de Duval County. Y identificamos que el top issue tiene que ser la desempeño de nuestras escuelas. Nuestros estudiantes necesitan ser educados. Necesitan moverse en sus tasa de literatura y necesitamos asegurarnos de que sean bien educados. Eso es top priority. Los resultados de la educación académica son los más importantes. Así que ese va a ser el número uno. El segundo tema que creo que necesitamos asegurarnos de enfrentar es asegurarnos de que nuestros estudiantes sean seguros. Que nuestros estudiantes sean seguros físicamente, también están seguros emocionalmente. Cuando entran en nuestros edificios se sienten seguros y que continuemos mejorando nuestra seguridad que es disponible para nuestros maestros, para nuestro personal y nuestros estudiantes. Las familias saben que cuando sus hijos entran en nuestros edificios que están seguros y bien educados. De nuevo, físicamente y también emocionalmente.
Gracias. Señora Anderson, state one success you've had in supporting teachers, staff and/or students in the district two schools and please be specific.
Ha sido realmente un honor para mí servir en las escuelas de distrito dos. Voy a ir a las primeras que me surgen en la cabeza sobre cómo he podido ayudar a servir en el distrito dos. Nosotros, en Mayport, fuimos capaces de trabajar juntos con el DOT y la ciudad para conseguir algunas luces cruzadas, luces de flash en lugar de cuando un estudiante fue asesinado cruzando la calle para ir a la escuela. Así que estábamos muy emocionados de poder hacer eso. En San Paulo Elementary, hemos puesto caminos cubiertos de puentes en lugar de nuestros estudiantes. He trabajado con Saks y PTO que han venido a nuestras escuelas asegurándonos de que sean capaces de obtener los recursos que necesitan y ser inmigrantes para ellos. Podría seguir adelante. Hay muchas formas. Amo estar fuera de la comunidad, ir a Saks, ir a reuniones de PTA, hospitar reuniones, visitar nuestras escuelas y nuestros aulas. Y estoy aquí para escuchar. Me gusta ir y conocer a la gente donde están, para escuchar sus necesidades y asegurarme de que soy consciente de lo que nuestra comunidad local quiere para nuestros estudiantes y lo que nuestras escuelas necesitan. Estuve acertando en una reunión con los padres de Seabreeze y estaban hablando de su programa de vida. Así que aprendiendo oportunidades para cómo podemos continuar mejorando nuestras escuelas. En una escuela de Mayport, hemos tenido una hermosa flyer en lugar que podemos compartir con nuestra comunidad empresarial para poder usar dinero y mejorar su programa de educación. Así que hay un número de formas y cosas que me gustan. Averus Park Elementary School, acabo de conectar con el proyecto de arte concreto y estoy iniciando un nuevo programa de arte allí después de la escuela. Sabes, es mi pasión continuar ayudando a nuestros estudiantes a prosperar en un entero sentido. Que podamos rodear servicios y eliminar los males académicos y ayudar a asegurar que sean exitosos, ya sea en el distrito dos o en el resto.
Gracias. Señora Carney.
Bueno, dado que solo tengo experiencia involuntariante en las escuelas que mis hijos cursaban, como mencioné antes, fui capaz de raised $3,000 para el sanitizante de manos debido a que el CPS no podía proporcionarlo. Cuando el centro de biblioteca de Neptun Beach estaba haciendo renovaciones bibliográficas y equipamiento de play ground, ayudé a raised dinero para eso también. Así que tenemos una gran comunidad de padres en NBE y fui muy afortunada de ser activa en esa comunidad. Es una escuela maravillosa, maravillosa. Pero en cuanto a las escuelas de distrito dos y a mi participación, solo estaba involucrada donde mis hijos cursaban, así que es difícil responder sin ser miembro de la junta.
Gracias. Señora Carney, esta pregunta va a usted primero. La legislatura estatal ha quitado gran parte de la autoridad de las juntas escolares locales. ¿Cuál efecto cree que esto ha tenido en las juntas locales?
No estoy de acuerdo con esa declaración. Creo que nuestra junta escolar está tomando muchas decisiones y creo que es por eso que estamos viendo una falta de apoyo de la comunidad venir a las reuniones de la junta escolar en los últimos dos años. Así que en cuanto a decisiones siendo tomadas, hablando de lo que viene del estado, creo que tal vez parece que la junta está bajo un poco más de presión porque nuestra junta de educación está dando más poder que los padres. Y así es realmente algo bueno desde mi perspectiva, tener más comunidad de padres involucrado.
Ok, gracias. Señora Anderson. La legislatura estatal ha quitado gran parte de la autoridad de las juntas escolares locales. ¿Cuál efecto cree que esto ha tenido en las juntas locales?
Así que una de las conversaciones que tenemos con la Asociación de Junta escolar frecuentemente es el rol de control local de los distritos en todo el estado. Estamos electos como representantes por los dólares de impuestos. Así que estamos allí para ayudar a asegurar que los presupuestos se supervisan, que nuestro superintendente esté responsable, que establezcamos un plan estratégico que es reflejo de nuestras visiones de valores. La realidad es que nuestras escuelas públicas, nuestras escuelas públicas tradicionales continúan siendo la mayoría de las opciones de la mayoría de las familias. Y así estamos aquí para ayudar a asegurar que nuestras escuelas públicas son excelentes opciones. Cuando la legislatura entra y elimina esa control local, esa autoridad local de nuestros distritos, exige tu voz. Tu voz es a través de tus oficiales locales. Así es como funciona nuestra democracia americana, república democrática. De lo contrario, se llama taxation without representation. Por eso tenemos oficiales electos. Y así es preocupante, es preocupante en todo el estado que no estamos siendo exige de autoridad para poder representarte justamente. Cuando alguien entra con una agenda política de tamaño único que se supone que es Duval y Tallahassee y el condado de St. John's y Miami-Dade, eso no está aquí para representarte. Y así es preocupante para mí. Continúo siendo una defensora de las escuelas públicas y de mi comunidad porque creo que es tu derecho tener un representante que refleja tus valores que apoya a las escuelas públicas tradicionales donde la mayoría de nosotros centra nuestros hijos.
Gracias. Señora Anderson, usted responderá esta pregunta primero. ¿Cuáles políticas educativas y prácticas, si hay, deberían ser determinadas en el estado y cuáles en el nivel local? ¿Y cuáles opciones tienen los padres para ejercer influencia en ambos niveles?
Empecé con la parte final de la pregunta. Creo que los padres tienen la oportunidad de ejercer influencia en ambos niveles tanto como quieran. Tenemos muchas formas y oportunidades para que los padres sean involucrados ya sea por Saks, por PTA, o ir a una reunión de la junta escolar, o enviando, llamándonos cuando hay más miembros en la junta escolar. Trata de ser accesible. Creo que también puedes ir a Tallahassee, ir a tu legislador, visitarlos cuando están en el distrito. Hay muchas formas para que los padres sean involucrados y tengan legislación. Y creo que la mayoría de la gente en esta sala estaría de acuerdo que cuando se escuchan, se dañan. Y así es solo un problema de asegurarnos de que estamos involucrados y que estamos involucrados con una civil y respetable, que estamos trabajando juntos no por agendas políticas, sino por real soluciones que ayuden a nuestros hijos a prosperar. Y creo que eso es realmente importante. En cuanto a lo que debería estar bajo el control de un distrito escolar versus el estado, creo que la responsabilidad del estado realmente debería ser supervisar los temas amplios, ¿verdad? Así que ellos eligen una lista de libros de texto, por ejemplo, y luego una lista corta se proporciona a los distritos y luego somos capaces de seleccionar de la lista corta lo que funciona para nuestra comunidad, lo que nuestros maestros quieren enseñar. El estado ayuda también a supervisar cosas como programación de CTP y financiación de fondos. Y todas esas cosas que ayudan a asegurar que el sistema de educación de cada niño de la ciudad de Florida prospera. Y luego localmente, deberíamos ser capaces de tomar decisiones nuancedas sobre cómo gastar nuestro dinero, cómo investir en nuestras necesidades locales basadas en nuestras comunidades locales y en lo que estamos haciendo.
Gracias. Señora Carney, quiere una pregunta. ¿Cuáles políticas educativas y prácticas, si hay, deberían ser determinadas en el estado y cuáles en el nivel local? ¿Y cuáles opciones tienen los padres para ejercer influencia en ambos niveles?
Así que creo que el estado debería ser el arco entero. En cuanto al currículum es preocupante, creo que necesita venir desde arriba hacia abajo porque al final del día, estaríamos performando como el estado. En el nivel local, me gustaría ver mucho más colaboración entre los distritos locales y los padres y ahora mismo eso no está sucediendo. No estamos siendo escuchados, no estamos siendo escuchados y es por eso que estoy sentada en esta silla. Creo que mucha gente en nuestro distrito aparece, tiene buenas intenciones, quiere tener su voz escuchada y luego observa a la junta en la dirección opuesta de la mayoría de la gente en la sala. Y así me gustaría ver mucho más participación de padres con nuestro distrito local. Creo que es imperative. Un niño no puede prosperar sin la relación entre un padre y su maestro y si no abrazamos eso como junta, entonces nuestro distrito se pierde.
Y así, ¿qué sugiere o qué metodismos implementar para asegurar o para aumentar la participación de padres y tener su voz escuchada?
Bueno, creo que eso está sucediendo por lo que estás viendo aparecer en las reuniones de la junta escolar. Los padres están muy preocupados. Es la decisión de la junta sobre si o no van a escuchar realmente. Y así es por la junta. Y así necesitamos tener más miembros que sean abiertos y dispuestos a escuchar a cada lado y a cada opinión de cada padre porque necesitamos cuidar de cada niño.
Gracias. Señora Anderson, ¿quería responder a mi pregunta, a mi siguiente pregunta?
Sí, creo que cuando los padres vienen y comparten con nosotros, fue justo el último mes. Los padres vinieron y compartieron sus preocupaciones sobre la política que estaban pasando y nos escuchamos. Hicimos un amendment a la política ahí en el piso para asegurarnos de que estaban tratando sus preocupaciones y sus necesidades. Y recibimos correos todos los días. Realmente impacta nuestra perspectiva. Surpreendentemente, hay más de 50 personas en un distrito escolar. Tenemos cientos de miles de niños que se sirven, cientos de miles de padres. No todos ellos vienen a una reunión de la junta. Hay más que una forma para nosotros escuchar sus necesidades. Así que muchas de las formas que no podemos conectar con los padres son a través de medios estructurales. Somos un distrito grande, así que estar conectado a nuestros PTA, a nuestros presidentes, a nuestros Saks, a nuestros administradores, que tienen la relación más cercana con sus padres. Ir directamente a nuestros maestros, visitar las escuelas. Estas son las formas en que podemos escuchar sobre las necesidades de nuestras comunidades escolares y las de nuestros padres. Y de nuevo, es que acabo de organizar, todos los jueves estaba en un play ground este mes y hay oportunidad para que los padres vengan y charlar, tener una conversación muy personal sobre lo que quieren ver pasar. Y así es incumplido con la gente que viene y hace eso. Y yo diría que la gente es, por lo general, el efecto que me da es que están satisfechos con mi responsabilidad y creo que los datos muestran eso cuando miramos lo que nuestras escuelas están haciendo, especialmente en el distrito dos. Tenemos escuelas muy altas. La gente está muy satisfecha con su comunidad local. Escucho todo el tiempo de maestros, todo el tiempo de padres y absolutamente creo que los padres deberían estar involucrados. Es, sabes, no hay duda de que cuando los padres están involucrados en la educación de sus hijos, ellos son los que tienen que hacerlo. Sabemos eso, lo hacemos y es importante que tratemos de hacer eso.
Gracias. Ok, esta siguiente pregunta, esta es de señora Carney. ¿Cuál es tu definición de derechos parentales en el contexto de los niños en la escuela?
Mi definición de derechos parentales es que son nuestros hijos. Somos los ultimáticos en tomar decisiones para nuestros hijos. No co-tenemos con el gobierno. Las decisiones hechas en nuestra casa son las decisiones que se hacen para nuestro hijo y nadie puede decirnos eso. Esa es mi definición de derechos parentales.
Gracias. Señora Anderson.
Soy una, tengo un niño de cinco años. Estamos tan emocionadas de empezar el kindergarten en nuestra escuela pública. Tengo derechos para dirigir mi hijo. Tengo la oportunidad y los derechos de instalar mis valores familiares en mi sistema de creencias. Y creo que cada padre tiene su propia. No entiendo cómo de alguna manera la idea de derechos parentales se ha convertido en un problema global es una conversación que estamos teniendo. Ciertamente tenemos derechos, nuestros padres tienen derechos. Y así, ya sabes, es incumbent de nosotros, como ya he dicho, asegurarnos de que estamos involucrados con nuestros padres, que entiendan las necesidades de nuestra comunidad. Donde creo que puede ser un poco difícil es cuando la gente piensa que sus sistemas de valores, sus sistemas de creencias, lo que quieren de su hijo es lo mismo que todo el mundo quiere de su hijo. Sabes, tenemos, somos diferentes, somos una comunidad muy diversa. Y así creo que cuando estás en la junta, no es solo para escuchar a los padres que comparten tu perspectiva. No es solo para un cierto set de valores que queremos. Es para escuchar de una comunidad muy diversa y asegurarse de que estás proporcionando una opción de escuela pública segura donde cada estudiante es protegido y cada familia es respetada. Así que, ya sabes, esta idea de derechos parentales es algo diferente que, ya sabes, un derecho que cada padre, independientemente de su sistema de creencias político, tiene o no tiene, es gracioso.
También quiero recordar a los candidatos, particularmente a señora Anderson, que realmente necesitas tener el micrófono más cerca o hablar un poco más alto porque tienen dificultades para escucharlo en el fondo de la sala. ¿De acuerdo? Gracias. Ok, así que, de acuerdo, pasa a usted, señora Anderson. Así que por favor explique cómo manejar una situación en la que una grupo de padres quiere la opción A y otra quiere la opción B. ¿Qué pasa con los derechos parentales de la grupo que no recibe el apoyo mayoritario que quiere para sus hijos?
Yo creo que eso es exactamente lo que estaba diciendo. Sabes, ha sido, sirviendo en la junta, no vas a hacer que todo suceda. Simplemente no va a pasar. Hay gente de la izquierda que quiere lo que quiere, hay gente de la derecha que quiere lo que quiere y hay todo el espectro en medio. Es muy, muy desafiante reunirnos e intentar hacer que los padres sean felices. Lo que me guía como miembro de la junta escolar es cuál es la manera de hacerlo. Al final del día, hay algunas decisiones realmente concretas, basadas en investigación, académica que podemos y deberíamos tomar que mejoren los resultados para nuestros hijos. Sabes, los padres y adultos y miembros de la comunidad tienen una variedad de creencias, pero al final del día todos queremos que nuestros hijos sean preparados y queremos que sigan una educación de alta calidad. Así que como junta, nuestro objetivo es centrarnos en los resultados de nuestros estudiantes. ¿Qué va a mejorar nuestros hijos? ¿Cómo van a obtener sus necesidades, tanto en desarrollo académico como en desarrollo? Y si podemos mantenernos enfocados en lo bueno para los niños, entonces es difícil de discutir. Sabes, así que miramos cosas como datos, miramos cosas como investigación, constantemente miramos encuestas y resultados y así tomamos decisiones porque no vas a hacer que todo el niño sea feliz.
Gracias. Esto habla de seguridad, que obviamente está aquí. Oh, lo siento. Lo siento mucho. ¿Quieres repetir?
Así que creo que hay una solución muy simple a la opción A y la opción B. Si tomas toda la ideología social y todas las agendas políticas fuera del currículum y nos enfocamos en matemáticas, literatura, ciencia... Y toma todas las otras cosas fuera del aula y nos enfocamos en la academia. classroom and we focus on academics, most, most parents, I think, would agree that we just want our children to graduate with a high quality education so that they can go to pursue the American dream. We don't need to be pushing agendas with certain vendors and, and all this money that we're spending on things that can be taught at home, or kids are getting on social media, or they're seeing in stores and on television. The job for the school district is to teach our children to be productive members of society, and we take all of their stuff out, you'll have a lot less arguing between parents.
Right, Ms. Carney, this is talking about safety. So, what changes to facilities and personnel would you propose for District Two's schools safe, schools for safety and security? Would this include hardening teachers?
So, first of all, I'd like to say that I am a full supporter of our police force. I have been endorsed by the Fraternal Order of Police, and I back the blue completely. We need to be taking care of our law enforcement officers on school grounds. And if they need reinforcements from trained staff, whether it be a retired veteran, or a parent, or a teacher that needs to be there to protect our students, I am all for it. Because there's nothing worse than having a school infiltrated and having an entire population be sitting ducks. There's no better solution to a person with, a bad person with a gun than a fully trained, good person with a gun.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
I'll start, I'll start with the audience's question, but I will go back to some other ways that we can also improve security in our schools. So, I am not a proponent of hardening our teachers. Our teachers have a lot on their plates. They have a very, very important job to do, which is taking care of our children and educating our children. They don't get paid enough to do that, they certainly don't get paid enough to run down and act in the same way. I think what is better for us to do as a school system is to make sure that we are creating environments where this is found, where we are addressing the emotional needs of our students with resources and wraparound services that are available to them, and not asking our teachers to take on one more burden. I think that we can do a better job with early intervention and prevention measures. That is a work that I have been working on for a few years, and we are excited about the variety of wraparound services we've been able to help get to our students and introduce, not only different modes of education and curriculum, the legislature passed, we have a health education, and we're there, District Two's got a lot with that, but also being able to connect with students. You know, relationships with students opens the door to learning. And when we give our teachers time, take things off their plates, and empower them, as the professionals they are, to build those healthy relationships and to care about kids, then we are less likely to see discipline problems, we are less likely to see children that are disenfranchised or feel unincluded. This is how we reduce bullying. It's not by hardening teachers. And I'm also thinking that as we are dealing with our halfpennies, continuing to be able to upgrade things like window film, and fencing, and lighting, and secure door locks, complete vesting rooms, these are the ways that we can also invest to secure businesses.
Thank you. And that's maybe a segue into the next question, Ms. Anderson. There's been discussion about hardening our schools. What does that mean?
You know, hardening our schools is a term that I am not a fan of. I don't think that schools should be hard places. I think that schools should be warm, soft, welcoming places. Too many of our children need a soft place to land. You know, a thousand of our kids are fostered here, only 4,000 of them are homeless. The variety of situations that children walk into our buildings with, some of us can't even fathom. And so, continuing to militarize our schools, to harden our schools, is not helping our children. This is not good for their development, for their psychological development. So, you know, I, I think that we want to make sure our kids are safe, and unfortunately, that means taking these extra precautions. But I'm okay in doing that in a way that is less impactful psychologically to our children. We will be implementing new mental detectors in our secondary schools, and I wish we didn't have to do that. It's something that unfortunately, our society continues to show us that we have to do to keep our kids safe, to keep our community safe, but it's not something I'm a fan of. So, again, I think that there are ways that we can make sure that we are putting in early intervention and prevention programs that will return on our investment miles further than hardening protocols, many of the hardening protocols.
Thank you. Ms. Carney?
I think that when parents drop their child off at school at 8:00 every morning, they want to know that their child is in a safe environment. And if we have doors wide open, and there's no protection, and there's nobody inside the building that can defend their child while they're there, that's an issue. I do agree, I, I've never not felt safe when my child was in a Duval Public School. We have one way in, one way out, we're buzzed in, we're buzzed out, but I do believe that we're living in a world, unfortunately, where we do have to protect our most precious commodity, and that's our children. And so, what's inside the building is the love and the nurturing and the safe space, especially for those children that depend on the schools for their every meal and that hug every day that they're not getting at home. However, in order for that to happen, we have to make sure that all the necessary protocols are in place. And so, I do believe, at this juncture in the world that we are currently living in, as much as I hate to say, it needs to be done.
Thank you. And this question is, do you, Ms. Carney, talking about our children, that'll help, so what are your plans to address the mental health issues in our schools? Lack of counseling, counselors that we have?
So, my oldest daughter, who is now 17, has a 504 plan. She suffers from pediatric depression, and she has ADHD. When we were attending Fletcher Middle School, and we sat down with the guidance counselor to go over her 504 plan for her accommodations, we were told that we had mental health support services that were available to us. And so, my husband and I decided we're going to take advantage of that. We love Fletcher Middle, we love the counselor, we were all totally on board with taking advantage of the services that were provided to us. Well, I picked up the phone and I called to try to make an appointment for my husband and I to sit down with the counselor and, and my daughter, and have an action plan. And I was told that there was a two-year waiting list for my daughter to be seen. When you have a vulnerable child in middle school who's suffering from depression, and you're told that there are services that are provided to you by the district, and you make a call, and you're told that you have to wait two years for that, that's unexcusable. My husband and I, thank goodness, we were able to go and seek outside counseling for her, and we've been paying for that for the last six years for her. But I think about all the children that can't afford to do that and don't have the insurance that will cover that. I believe that we need to do a much better job in hiring more staff and having more places that these kids can go, because we're in a turbulent climate where kids, after being masked for two years, are having anxiety. We have children that are being bullied on a regular basis for who they are, and we have got to get a grip on it. I would like to completely revamp our mental health, social services portion of the district, because it's not, it's not enough in the climate that we're currently living in.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
I have to say, I'm really curious, what, what would be done to revamp the whole system? Having a lot of experience as a mental health counselor, and having worked in a full-service program, I'm very familiar with the spending and the spending limitations, and the services that are available and services that are not available. This is something that is dear and dear, obviously, to my heart, a top priority for the school district. Out here in District Two, our schools are supported by the Beaches Resource Center. They are incredible. There is a wonderful team of therapists, but those are not Duval County Public Schools employees. And in fact, I don't think there should be Duval County Public Schools employees. So, I hear my opponent saying she wants to hire more people, but that's not her job. So, our job is to contract with outside providers who are trained and experts in this field, who do not report to the district. And this is really important, because I've done this work. You do not want mental health counselors that are under the thumb of the school district. We do not want to have expectations of these counselors that need to provide really important mental health services to our children, be employed by the school district. The healthiest way for us to help the students is to partner with communities and community programs that are, that already exist. Our Full Service Schools is an investment that is portion funded by the school district as a partnership with the Hope Alliance and United Way that match funds. It is a program unlike anything in the rest of the state of Florida. People call us all the time and want to know, how do we do that? And you know what's happened? The more that we have made counselors available and accessible, the faster those lists fill up, and it tells me that our children are suffering. I know that they're suffering, and we need to continue to do more, but revamping the whole system and starting from ground zero is not the way to do it.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Anderson, on, on teacher retention, and because we were asking to ask the military to, it's supposed to help fund some of the raises and salaries for our, our teachers, what would you propose to do to improve teacher recruitment and retention?
So, I think that our district is doing quite a bit to try to improve the teacher recruitment. We have had, man, we've really expanded recruitment options out of state and all over the county. Obviously, we know that part of what needs to happen is improving teacher salaries. We've had a wage compression issue that's happened over the last couple of years, and we need to be able to retain our most experienced, highly effective educators who won't see a salary increase for 15 years. That's not acceptable. We know that this is an issue, then it's bargained with our bargaining units, and we have great partners in those units, who work really hard to make sure that we are meeting the needs of teachers. They hold us to task when, when they need to, so that we can find a ground that works for our educators. But that's not the be all and all, and we are not under any, you know, illusion that raising teacher salaries is it. Unfortunately, we have to make sure that our teachers, we can get things off our teachers' plates, they're exhausted. It has not been an easy couple of years for anyone. Our teachers and our administrators have been through, you know, struggle like we have never seen. And I think if you ask any one of them, they're going to tell you that. So, we have to do more to take care of them, we need to support them with resources. And I think another thing that we need to be really thoughtful about as a community, and certainly as a board, is the way that we talk about our teachers. Unfortunately, right now, we have people that come to our meetings, they continue to spread misinformation about the work that our teachers do, they denigrate and degrade them, and they treat them like they are not the professional educators that deserve our respect, that do the most important work of taking care of our children for seven to 10 hours a day. So, I think it's incumbent upon board, as we work to take care of our teachers and recruit folks, that we support our teachers and advocate for the hard work that they do, shut down this disinformation, because it is not helping our teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Carney? Sure. What would you propose to improve teacher recruitment and retention?
Again, I'm going to go back to common sense, and that starts with discipline in the classroom. I am a huge fan of our teachers here, especially in District Two. I have relationships with a lot of our teachers, and the things that I'm hearing the most is that we're not following through on consequences. Children are getting as little, you know, they go down to the office and they're back in five minutes disrupting the classroom again. We are not suspending kids, we're not giving kids detention, there are no consequences at all in the classroom, and it's making it virtually impossible for the teachers to teach. And so, as far as retention goes, I think that the most important thing is to be improving our work environment. Nobody wants to show up at work every day and be treated poorly. Our teachers lack respect, they are not being supported, and they're relying on the parent community to help them. And I don't think that with such a budget that we have here at DCPS, that we can't cut some waste and find a way to reward our teachers with supplies and support and a discipline policy that works, so that our teachers can effectively teach the curriculum? Because right now, that's the largest reason why teachers are leaving. It's not due to salary. I think most of the teachers in this room will agree that you did not become a teacher to become a millionaire. You did it because you love children and you want to see children thrive. I completely agree that we need to be, we need to not be 41st in the state in teacher salary. We have a governor that's pumping $800 million into teacher salaries. We have a new budget that's coming in, it's $2.6 billion, but we've lost 500 teachers and 10,000 students. So, I'm pretty sure we can find the money to do that and make it a real salary raise that will stick.
Ms. Carney? This is on the section of curriculum. Okay, I'm the moderator, and I will moderate the audience, so please be respectful of your fellow attendees, okay? Thank you. This is on curriculum, Ms. Carney. There's been a lot of discussion about critical race theory being taught in classrooms. We'd like to know what your opinion is on that, and if you can provide examples of when and where it's been taught in the schools, and whether that impact has been positive or negative, if you know.
Critical race theory is a Marxist ideology that teaches people that our country is systemically racist. It teaches children that white people are oppressors and people of color are oppressed. I do not agree with the ideology. I think, I'm, I'm a fan personally of Martin Luther King, who believes that it's the content of your character, not the color of your skin. And so, I judge people based on their character, not what they look like. And I think if you look at the history of this country, and you look at how far we have come, to put critical race theory into the mix is only progressive. It's taking us backwards. So, as far as examples, I can tell you that about six months ago, I received an email from an Andrew Jackson High School mother, whose daughter was taking an African-American studies class, and a teacher told her that only white people can be racist. And so, she brought it to the principal, I, you know, I'm, I'm not Andrew Jackson, this is an email that I received. I, I don't believe that 99% of our teachers are teaching this, but I do believe that we're in a culture war, culturally heated climate, there's so much disinformation going out about what our country is, who we are as a people, and what we believe, and it doesn't belong in the classroom. We need to be, we need to be teaching the true history of our country, we need to be teaching our children to love this country, it is the greatest country in the world, and we need to be embracing that. And inciting critical race theory ideologies is not going to accomplish that, it's only going to do the reverse.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
So, critical race theory. I remember when this came out as a talking point in the district, and we're asking the superintendent, you're like, ew, what is critical race theory? I didn't even know what that is. And so, it's been so interesting to watch this evolve as a talking point, again, about how to, you know, tear down our public schools. As my point had mentioned, 99% of teachers are not doing this. Does, do we have teachers that inappropriately engage with students? Encourage activism in a way that's inappropriate? Yep. Is that okay? No, it's not. And I, I fully support making sure that we are, we will put discipline measures in place, which is called progressive discipline in the district, where teachers are made aware of what those parameters are. It's absolutely not okay for someone to make someone feel bad for, for the color of their skin. You know, but I also think that it's rarely happening and certainly not a part of our curriculum. We teach the four standards, when instances are coming up... We teach the Florida standards, when instances are coming up, it can be incumbent upon us to be data aware, so that we can take appropriate action. This is where our ability to work together, to reach across political divides, to not get caught up in the rhetoric and the politics of these conversations is so important. These are our children, and it is important for us to be able to make sure that they are getting high-quality education, again, that respects core values, high values, and allows our children to be able to thrive and not carry burdens, you know, and these kinds of responsibilities. That's not what I want for my child, it's not what I want for your kids. The reality is, it's not a part of our curriculum. Our teachers are not pushing it by and large. In the instances where it is happening, our teachers should be disciplined appropriately, and it should be corrected.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, this question is to you. Do you need some water? Go ahead. Please give us some specific information on how critical thinking and emotional intelligence skills and strategies are taught in school. For instance, how do you teach students to recognize assumptions, evaluate information, and draw considered factual conclusions?
So I don't, because I'm in charge of curriculum, and I'm no longer a teacher in this classroom, I don't know that I can give you super specific examples, but I can tell you that this has been a conversation that I've been having with our district board for some time. I think that being able to make sure that our students have these soft skills, that they are not only graduating academically successful, but that they can go out into our community and be, you know, functional employees, and neighbors, and community members, is what we hear over and over again from business leaders and community members and parents. And so, I'm really proud of the work that our school board did on our strategic plan. The fourth goal for our strategic plan is soft skills goal. We really are pushing the district out of their comfort zone and figuring out ways to address these issues. How do you make sure that our students are getting their developmental and social needs met in addition to their academic needs? Because we know that we're not just putting kids out that can memorize content in curriculum. We want to make sure that they're able to be fully successful, high-functioning people in our community. So, being able to look at what I call executive functioning, as we call it in our field, is, I've been heard, I'm excited that the new sixth-grade coursework and classwork will incorporate some of these various specific skills and executive functioning, because this is the developmentally appropriate time to teach children. And so, those are the conversations that I'm having around the board table and with our administrators to make sure that we understand how to take care of children's developmental needs, because this is the work that I do as a mental health counselor and a practitioner who specializes in children.
Thank you. Ms. Carney?
I think when it comes to critical thinking skills, I think it's how you run the classroom. So I think that it's really important for teachers to engage the students in their own conversations and let them come to conclusions on their own and have the teacher be a guide. I think it's really important to not just sit in front of a computer, but to actually speak to one another and voice each other's opinions, because in the real world, you actually have to do that. And so, if you can start having conversations and having discussions with your peers about the curriculum, about a topic that might be heated, it gets you to sit back and think for yourself and say, well, how do I really feel about that? And why do I feel strongly about that? And how do I relay that to my peer? I think it's really, really important to make sure that we are having peer-to-peer discussions in the classroom with teacher supervision, and I think that will only bring more of those very, very important critical thinking skills out of our children, especially as they go from middle to high school.
Thank you. This question is to you, Ms. Carney. So charter schools, it's always a topic of discussion, and there's a lot of misconceptions, so I just want to get your feedback on this, go for feedback. Since Duvall County Charter Schools receive public funding, do you think they should be compelled to follow the same guidelines and rules as the traditional public schools? Why or why not?
First off, I would like to say that I am a very large supporter of school choice. I believe that all of our children are unique, have unique abilities, and that while 85% of our population does choose that traditional public school, parents need to know that they do have other options, and one of those is a charter school. My youngest daughter goes to a public charter school. I believe that our public charter schools here are actually under more scrutiny than the traditional public school and have a tougher time being successful because we have a district that doesn't really embrace them.
Ms. Anderson?
I want to go back for a second, just really quickly and take that apart in time with a comment that my opponent made about having students engage in peer-to-peer conversations on controversial topics. You know, I just find that to be really ironic and contradictory to the statement about sticking to the basics. So, you know, I hear over and over again contradictory information. You don't want teachers to engage with students on controversial issues, but you want to have students have conversations on controversial issues. So that just doesn't quite add up to me. As far as charter schools go, charter schools are a part of our system. We live in the great state of Florida, and school choice is an option. We have, we'll open this year with 44 charter schools in Duvall County. And I think that charter schools can be a wonderful option in many families, especially as my opponent knows, right? When you find a school that fits your value system, oh, that's wonderful. I'm curious, when we talk about things like transparency and lens and audit, would you want the same from our charter schools? What about our voucher schools? Those are public companies too. Are you willing to ask that? And do you know that you can't ask that? Do you know that as a school board, we don't govern and we can't require transparency for taxpayers when it comes to how charter schools and private schools are spending in a public tax money? So I'm happy to support charter schools, I think they certainly have a role in our community, but I do believe that we need to be held to the same accountability standards and the same standards for transparency. We were just told, our oversight committee was just told, we can't request additional information about how they're using our half penny sales tax. That is not going to be allowed. So, you know, I think when we're talking about how is our money being spent, you know, I think it should apply to all of us. And when we see a budget that continues to go up, it's important to know that part of that is because we are a pass group for voucher schools and for charter schools, and that's where a lot of the money is.
Thank you.
She needs rebuttal.
You can, you can, you can, wait, you can use, you can use your, I'm sorry, Ms. Carney, you can use your time until the next question, if you want to rebut anything that Ms. Anderson...
She never got a rebuttal.
She took her time that she had to rebut, she would not have asked for additional time. Okay, she used her own time. Wait, hold on. Here's the rule. Ms. Anderson used her own time for two minutes, and she chose to use part of that as rebuttal. Ms. Carney has the same option, okay? No one gets any additional time to rebut. That's not fair.
You told her a rebuttal. She said you want to do a rebuttal, but you never asked a question.
No, we both asked the same question. Those of us asked the same question. Excuse me. We can end the form right now, okay? Now, this is the rules, so you either like it or you don't, and I'm sorry, but this is the way it is. Ms. Carney, if you want to rebut anything Ms. Anderson says, you can use your allotted time to do that with the next question, okay? And the next question should be fairly short, maybe, but, because you'd already answered some of this, but it was about, you know, your children attending, you know, do your children have your children attended traditional public schools, charter schools, or private schools? Ms. Carney?
So I have two daughters. Both of my children attended Neptune Beach Elementary, K through five. My oldest child attended Fletcher Middle School, graduated from Fletcher Middle School. After fighting the system to get her accommodated, in eighth grade, we found out about the McKay Scholarship. I didn't know until eighth grade that that was something that was afforded to us. Her confidence was in the toilet, her grades were plummeting, she was being bullied, she wasn't being accommodated in the classroom, even though we were sitting in 504 meetings being told that she was being accommodated. And I could no longer sit by as a parent and keep trying. So at that point, we did receive the McKay Scholarship, and we sent our oldest daughter to Beaches Chapel over here in Neptune Beach. She was there for the last two years, but she has now decided that she wants to finish her high school career via FLDS during homeschool. So she will be doing that for the next two years. After our experience we had at Fletcher Middle School, we decided that when our youngest graduated from Neptune Beach Elementary, that we were going to look into different options, and so we exercised our right for school choice, and we sent her to Quorumstone Classical of Nevada. So I believe that I have a very well-rounded experience of public school, charter school, private school, and now homeschool. I know how they all work, and I know how they're different for everybody, and I know that they're good for each individual child if that's their particular need. I would like to respond to what she said, since I do have 30 seconds. It's okay to sit around in a classroom and talk about the Civil War and have a discussion about the Civil War. I'm not talking about heated political agendas. I'm talking about having discussions about history, science, math, literature. That's it, okay? Just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Sure, we are so excited to start the awarding this year. My little one will go to our neighborhood public school, Chats Creek, we're excited to go to Camp Creek and become a Creeper. I have one child, but in my time, as a teacher and as a counselor, I have been able to be in a variety of school settings. So for the many, many years that I was a therapist and I worked with students in their schools, I worked in both private school and charter school settings. I was a full-service schools counselor many years ago, and so I have a lot of experience working in those, working in those programs as well. Like I said, I'm not opposed to charter schools. I think some of them work in different ways than the public school can, you just can't. They work outside of the bounds in ways that work for some families, and I'm fine with that as well. I've also worked in some private schools that take vouchers and scholarships, and unfortunately, I've worked in some of those schools that are not meeting the needs of children. I feel certain that Ms. Carney is very actively engaged with her child and making sure her child gets that, so I don't want to particularly be misunderstood with what I'm saying. Having been in a variety of communities around this district, not every school provides the same quality of education, especially if you're in a public school. So I have seen private schools take voucher money and do little for the babysitter. I have worked with children that, when I go to the principal and I say she's not meeting standards, he says, no, she's on grade level, and then has to pull out her test scores to see that she's all O in ninth grade at a third grade level. I have worked with families to advocate to get them back into a public school system where they can get the services they need, and when families are not getting the services they need in our public schools, which happens, and it's not okay, I have advocated with those families in our public school system, so that we can improve.
Thank you. Okay, this goes to Ms. Anderson. This is about the budget. So voters will be asked to approve the millage rate increase. How would these added funds be spent for District Two schools?
So the millage increase, 75% of that will go toward our traditional public school teacher salaries, 12.5% of that will go toward charter school teacher salaries. The 12.5% of that is set to be invested in bringing up and revitalizing arts and athletics programs. That's, we're making 7 into 11 of those teachers. And so, I'm not going to try to do that percentage on the spot right here, but you've got quite a bit of money going into public schools, traditionally and charter, for teacher salaries. Teacher salaries are bargained, so I can't tell you exactly how that money will be used, but I'll tell you that a big part of why it's so important is because of the wage compression we've experienced, and wanting to make sure that we are continuing to hire highly qualified and highly effective educators, and that those folks are being compensated adequately for their professional experience if they went to the table. That millage conversation is a little separate from the budget, but I can go, I can let you know that what we just approved was tentative millage for 3.2. Now, that is a rollback of the required local effort. The state tells us what we have to spend, what we have to contribute, excuse me, to participate in the Florida Education Finance Program. We want to be part of the FDFB, get monies from the state, then Duvall County has to contribute 3.2 mills to that fund. We don't have discretion about that. We can't raise it, we can't lower it, we have to improve what they tell us to improve. And 10 years ago, that number was 5.4. So even if we approve this millage, that we have discretion to invest in salaries, we will still not be back to the same rate than we were 10 years ago. And so, it is, we don't get the same opportunity because of these rollbacks to actualize property values. It's a common misconception in our budget, and I think that it's good that we're having these conversations.
Thank you. Ms. Carney?
So in regards to the millage, I'd like to clarify that it's not a salary increase, it's a supplement. It's a one-time payment, it's highly taxed, it does not count towards your retirement. So that's, first off, what's, you can go to the Duvall County Public School website, there's an FAQ section there that explains that it's a, it is a supplement. So it's basically a bonus check. So, I just wanted to clear that out first of all. As far as the millage that's currently been rolled back, we currently, because of the housing boom here in Jacksonville, have received an 8.34% increase in our assessed values. So the district is actually getting a $550 million bump with the millage because of the property values that have gone up in our, in our wonderful city, and sort of most of you are very happy that your property values have held or gone up exponentially. What I would like to see is that we actually have salary increase. We're looking at $82 million per year roughly over the next four years if the referendum goes through. I would rather take any waste we have in the actual budget and give our teachers a real salary raise that's going to stick and count towards their retirement and not be taxed as higher, and if the referendum does pass, let's put it all towards arts and athletics because we've been missing it for a very long time and we need to have it back.
Thank you. Ms. Carney, this question is to you. How and where, where will you cut wasteful spending, balance the budget, and keep taxes low?
So again, I feel like we do need an outside audit. I do believe that we have a lot of overhead when it comes to maintenance. I know that we are, we have a maintenance staff with Duvall County Public Schools, but then we subcontract the work. So we're paying twice for the same service. So I think there's a lot of waste there, I think that we can streamline that. I also believe that we have a transportation issue. We spend a lot of money on transportation. We can't just be taking one child to a magnet school on a bus that seats 75 children. So we need to find a way to look at the transportation plan and see where we can cut costs and make that more efficient, and also, you know, with the cost of gas prices right now, I think if we can streamline our routes and make sure that we're running less buses, it will cost us less money. I also think that we have a lot of vendor contracts that maybe we don't necessarily need to be having in the schools right now. We spend a lot of money on certain programs that don't necessarily need to be in the schools right now. And so, I would rather see those dollars go towards our teachers and supporting our students in the classroom with the right books and supplies than, you know, some of these other vendor contracts that we have out there.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. So another misconception about budgets is how much we are auditing. So the school board employs an external auditor that comes in and does audits annually. We also employ an internal board auditor, that person reports directly to the board, and we are able to have them do special projects and to look into a variety of auditing issues. The auditor general comes to the district from the state and does an audit every three years. So in the off years, we do the external auditor, you know, internal auditor at all times that reports to the board, and the district has their own auditing staff. So auditing is happening all the time. Additionally, during my chairmanship, I put together a special committee to create policy, to create an audit advisory committee. That committee is made up of seven members. I was really grateful for the work that our board did collaboratively on this. I passed Board Member Pearson and Board Member Joyce to help chair that, to lead this work, and we were able to get citizens that now come in and they are ambassadors and provide this information and provide an extra layer of transparency to the community. And they all have finance and auditing backgrounds, I'm really proud of the chief auditor from UNF who serves as my appointee to that committee. So that's an extra... So that's an extra place where we can do some auditing. I think what you'll find is contrary to popular belief, there's not a lot of wasteful spending. It just costs a lot to run a school district. And so you are free to look at budgets and auditing, they're all held and regulated. You can actually go to our website right now. As far as busing, we spent sixty million dollars on busing. The state gives us about twenty million dollars. So yes, we spent a lot more than the state provides. That is because we have a very robust magnet system. People are very happy with their magnet system. And if you want to look at reducing transportation, you're going to dismantle the magnet system.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay, so we reviewed your Treasury reports and compiled a list of political action committees that have contributed to your campaigns. And we made a list to support the audience because some of them are... And the question to both of you, Ms. Anderson will answer first, is, how would you describe these PACs and how do they support your campaign principles? If you want to stand, it might be easier to see them. And I apologize, they may not have the full name, but the report's only allowed some of the letters. So in general, you don't have to name every PAC, but if you, if it's the one you want to talk about in your two minutes, feel free to do that. Not seeing Ms. Carney. Okay, go ahead.
Great. So you'll see that these PACs are by and large labor organizations and education organizations locally and around the state that are supported by campaign. I don't think that it's any surprise that our teachers and our votes that are invested in our school system are supporting another educator, that are supporting somebody that clearly is interested in supporting our teachers and their work and that wants to put our kids first, that it isn't interested in making our board into a political circus. So they're happy to invest in my campaign. I'm very grateful to them for that investment and that's who these votes are. They're the hardworking people that make running our school systems possible.
Ms. Carney, same question?
Okay, so I just want to preface by saying that the National Teachers Union is the largest political organization that donates ninety-nine point nine seven percent of their money to Democrats. So I just want to go ahead and put that out there because political action committees are political. You can include...
Ms. Carney, just to, Ms. Carney, hold on one second. Just to remind you, you can give her the time back, but this is a non-political...
So let's see. Show that respect and best by kids are two organizations that want to employ veterans in the classroom. It's been shown that when you employ a veteran, it helps with PTSD and it helps them to have worth after they have fought for our country. And I truly believe that it's a wonderful program. They do go through a teacher certification program with these organizations. Show that respect is primarily the ratings in the state of Florida. Principal leadership, conservative values, but it's actually, it's actually principal, principal towardings for leadership or conservative values, whatever. These are political action committees that are supported by our local elected officials. So we've had a lot of support from our elected public servants here in Duval County for my campaign. They realize the need for change and so they have supported my campaign. So that's the rest of them, pretty much. And then the Jacksonville Consolidated Matches, that's the virtual order of things.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. No, you cannot, no, I'm sorry, you cannot ask a question. I'm sorry, no, you cannot. Okay, next question goes to Ms. Carney. What is your inspiration for running for a school board?
My children. And the fact that I am fully invested in this community. I understand the unique fabric of the Beaches community. I live here, I'm an active member, I am a small business owner here, and I am living where I'm going to retire. And I have such a passion in my heart for the future of our, of our community. The children that are coming out of our local public schools here in the district are the future leaders of our community. And we need to be taking care of them and teaching them not only what a great community Jacksonville is, but what a great country ours is. And I feel like we need to get back to a common sense public education where we're teaching math, reading, science, and critical thinking skills so that we are providing a world-class education so that when that child graduates from the Duval County Public School, they can go get a trade, they can go to a vocation, they can go to a four-year university. They need to know that the world is their oyster and they can do anything that they want to, as the American dream is possible. And that's why I am running, the one I am living. I love this town more than anything and I want my kids and the rest of our kids to appreciate where they are and where they come from.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Sure. So I ran in 2018 because I wanted to take care of our kids. It was right after Marguerite Stone and Douglas massacre and I knew that what we needed to do was we had conversations about how to better meet the needs of our children, both developmentally and acting. That mission, that goal, that why for me hasn't really changed. We have more work to do. I am not under any illusion that we are doing everything perfectly. I am more than happy to lean into the challenges of the work that we still have because our kids deserve it. Unfortunately, what I've also seen on my journey as a board member is that our public schools and our education system is under attack. We have classrooms that are crippled with culture bombs and I think that we need to be setting the politics of these things aside because our kids depend on us to do that. The kids don't sit on either side of a political lie. So my goal, and my goal when I ran and my goal still today, is to take care of our children. My child, who is starting kindergarten, your children, and the children in this community, I'm a, I'm a Duval County Public Schools kid. I grew up here, I graduated from a public school, I'm happy to call Duval and Jacksonville my home. And I want to continue to make sure that working together with our community leaders, with our business leaders, with our profit organizations, that we have the same shared vision of moving Duval County forward and that we can make sure that our children are thriving because they are the future of this community. That is my only why and it is why I'm continuing to run.
Thank you. All right, in conclusion, before your closing statements, so Ms. Anderson, based on your answers tonight, what is the one specific need our District Two schools have and why are you the person qualified to address that need?
One need, I'll tell you this, one need that we haven't talked about tonight. In the next four years, whoever sits in this seat will be helping make decisions about who our next leader is. Our superintendent has shared that she will be retiring. And we are grateful for her sort of leadership and her board action for our community. But one of the most important jobs of a school board member is to hire a superintendent. And so I think when we sit down as a board to do that work, we need to have people that are experienced on the board, we need to have people that understand children, we need to have people that understand our education. Because we are looking for a leader that first and foremost can take care of the academic needs of our kids, but that also understands Duval, that understands who we are, that is passionate about our community, wants to see us thrive, that can manage a large budget. So understanding that budget and being trained in how that works is really important. So I do think that, you know, I'm the person that brings that experience to the table. That's going to be one piece of the puzzle that I think we need over the next four years, for sure. Not just for Duval County Public Schools as a whole, but certainly for District Two as well. Our District Two schools are also going to be looking at giving a lot of money through the penny sales or tax referendum. And I think that being able to make sure that we are following those capital improvements are going to be really important. Continuing to take care of our educators, make sure, making sure that our classrooms are fully staffed and fully abundant, being able to continue to advocate for students, not just here in Duval County, but across the state, that deserve a high-quality public school system when it's under attack.
Thank you. Ms. Carney?
So I think that transparency is a very large issue and I think that not only as a parent, you deserve to have a school board member that returns your emails, picks up the phone, walks past the principal's office into the classroom and sees what's going on, is fully engaged and is an active member of your community. And I think being a parent who's been actively engaged in her child's education, showing up to the classroom every day, and having older children, and knowing what it's like to raise children from K all the way through high school, I have a fresh perspective as a parent, looking at it from a different lens, showing you what it's like from our side and what we see the teachers going through and what we see our, our children going through at home. And so transparency is huge. I am that person that will be there and will show up and wants to do the work. I am passionate about our area and I love everything about it and what we stand for. I have no agenda other than to bring common sense back to public education. And that means taking all of this stuff out. We need to be focused on academics. Half of our children can't read. How, how can we, how, if we have packs of children who cannot, are not on grade, are for reading, how are they going to go get a job? They end up on the street. And you know what happens then? Then that puts JSL under pressure. So we have more crime. So we need to focus on literacy, math, and life skills. We need to have a financial literacy class before we graduate from high school so our kids can balance and check, they know what debt means. They need to know that they can have a vocation, that they don't have to go to a four-year university. They can go to FSCJ and start a business and be a productive member of society and have a good living. That's what we need to be instilling, that's why I'm running, and that's what I see for the future of Duval County Public Schools.
Thank you. And now we'll have closing statements. And Ms. Carney, we have honors. So continue on.
All I, all I ask, because that really was my closing statement, all I ask of you all is tonight, I'm glad you are all here, I'm glad you're engaged. I am so glad that we are all paying attention to school board races because I do believe that this truly is the most important item on your ballot. And so do your homework, talk to me, talk to Ms. Anderson, ask the questions because this is a very, very important decision. And I appreciate all of you coming tonight. It speaks volumes to how much you care about our city and how much you care about our children. And so I just want to thank you all for coming and I want to thank you, just watch, for putting this on. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. Yes, certainly I'll echo, I appreciate your engagement. I said multiple times when I was chair, we dealt very, very difficult decisions. I don't think that we can do this work in silos. Even when we disagree, it's important to come together, it's important to be a one man. That is how I live my life and that's how I've governed on the board, that's how I will continue to work. I am very proud of the bipartisan work that I've done across the aisle, both at the state level and here locally. And, and I think that it's really important that we are able to continue to move forward in a way that focuses on our children. I am proud to have the endorsement of every Beaches mayor, both, all, all of the Beaches, Mayor Glasser, Mayor Brown, and Mayor Hoffman, understand that we need to put in our children first and not engage in, in political discourse. And I find it interesting to see that if you are pledging your commitment to someone's political agenda, that you are not here to carry out a political agenda. So I am here to take care of the local community, to listen to you all. That's what I've been doing, that's what I want to continue to do. You know, when we are making decisions as a board, it's going to mean that you need someone there with experience. For example, when you look at data that says forty-eight or forty-seven percent of our students are proficient on a standardized test, that doesn't mean that they can't read. So that's important to be able to know what data actually means because when you say things like that, it points out our budget here and the work we're doing. So understanding how the system actually works, having experience with children, being committed to our local community, these are the things that I bring to the table. So by all means, please come and have conversations with us. Thank you for being here tonight. At the end of the day, I hope that we've all agreed that we need to put kids first and not political.
Well enough, thank you very much. Candidates, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Carney, thank you so much for joining us. It was a most informative and lively discussion. Audience, for the most part, you guys got about a C-plus on our poll. B-plus, B-plus, remind us. But thank you, Ms. Carney, and I hope you can throw something for both candidates.